Good evening, everyone. It is 6:13. It is Tuesday, July 11, 2023. It is the Finance and Operations Committee meeting. We're in the High School North Boardroom. And I'll take the attendance. Ms. Brown?
Present.
Mr. Claffey?
Here.
And Ms. Johnson is here. So we do have a quorum. The first thing on our agenda this evening is the Charlotte Avenue Playground upgrade. And is that going to be you? Who's going to be presenting? Okay, hi, how are you?
So I am hoping you got packets with the pictures and the structure?
And your name?
I'm sorry. I'm Trish Bowyer. I'm the principal at Charlotte Ave.
Thank you. We did get the layout of the playground.
Okay. So what we found out the last few years, we did put a couple of new pieces in a couple of years back. And our initial structure has been having issues, and we've been replacing pieces continuously. Upon our last inspection, we were told our platforms are probably a year or two out, and then it will be done. And they're thousands of dollars. So the PTO decided that we probably should look at replacing the structure so that we would have a safe, comfortable structure. So we've done a couple. We did a major fundraiser this year. That, together with the money we still had from our other playground money we pulled together, along with a donation from the Kyle. I gotta look it up, I'm sorry. We got a donation from the Kyle Benninger Trust. And Kyle went to school at Charlotte Ave. And his family raised his money to give back to the community and for kids. And they made a donation of $10,000 towards the playground. Gave us the money we needed to put the order in. Right now, Orion Brothers is willing to give us a 6% discount if we're able to put the order in, I believe, in the next week. So we were thrilled to be here.
Does anybody on the committee have any questions? Mr. Claffey?
Just, thank you. So you're not asking the district to pay for any of this?
No. Just permission to do it.
Motion?
Sure.
Motion to approve the playground at Charlotte Ave? I don't know the wording that you want, but...
That's fine. That's good enough. A second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I want to say thank you because, you know, my biggest concern here is that we piecemeal everything together, and we don't do it right, excuse me, the first time. So then we have to come back and fix it again and again. And I'm sure all your students will enjoy the new playground.
Our PTO is extremely supportive, and they really do recognize that and how safe it is to have it all fixed at once.
Right. Well, thank them for us. Thank you for bringing us...
And I just wanted to say that I really like the plans. It looks like it's going to be a very nice playground.
It'll be exciting for the kids.
Yes, it will be. Thank you for coming this evening. We appreciate it. On the next item on the agenda is the contracts for Clearway. And that's you, Mr. Donovan?
Yes, that would be me. Hold on one sec. Okay, so as you're aware, we've been working with the Clearway School for a number of years, probably at least 20, 30 years. So we typically sign an agreement annually for this. And if you recall, the way we do it is we come up with a lump sum price, which allows us a certain amount of students to attend the school during the year. So this contract, just as it was for last year, is for up to 65 Nashua students, which is most, almost all the students there are Nashua students anyway, with a cap of identified students of up to 10. This year, we've probably had seven or so identified students. The number of unidentified students, I probably don't have a great number on that. One of the discussions we had and we put in this contract is that the guidance counselors at the high school will be receiving every week or two attendance lists of who's there, who's going. If there's a student who hasn't been showing up, they'll be made aware right away. I guess there's been some delays at times. So this way, since the students are Nashua students, if they go to Clearway and they're not going to school, Clearway isn't going to track them down. We have resources to do that. So we've added that to the contract for this year. The request from Clearway was for a 5% increase, which would bring the total to 655,000. Basically, what I wrote in my memo, as I said, if the rest of Nashua School District got a 3% increase, so the other option would be to choose a 3% increase to send to them, which would be a total of 642,720.
I put a little note here. If the mayor's only giving us a 3%, I can't give a 5%, 2% that we don't have. So I'm going to... Does anybody have any questions or any concerns on this? Ms. Brown?
I agree with you that this program, this program is really very important to the city of Nashua, to a lot of students, and it's proved its value over time. I'm glad that we're adding more accountability into the product, into the contract for attendance because, you know, we don't want to be taking, giving spots to students that are not taking advantage of how valuable this program is. So I am very glad about that. But I do think the fact that they are, Clearway is kind of its own individual environment that takes care of everything there under the own roof. I'm wondering if there would be consideration for splitting the difference with like a 4%? I don't know. Would that be something that the administration would consider? Or is your recommendation to go with 3, since it's consistent with the rest of the contract?
That would be my recommendation, but it's up to you.
All right. Well, then, you've made a good point that the mayor has offered us 3% and the administration's recommending 3%. So I will agree with that.
Mr. Claffey?
Thank you. I had a question about the length of the school day. Can I ask, is it appropriate to ask that now, given this involves substantial expense? So why is it that their school day is an hour less than the high school?
I believe that is mostly due to their programming. There is, in theory, it's supposed to be some community partnerships and internships and students receiving some real-world learning experiences. So it's time embedded so that they can partner and have some internships.
If I may ask a follow-up, just, I just noticed their start time is an hour later. So I was wondering, are they, they're doing an internship from 7:20, 7:15, 8:15?
Well, I think there's an aspect on the later start time is also, a lot of the students who are recommended to go there might have an attendance issue, and 7:15 is early for some students. So I think they're looking at...
But the pupil expenditure doesn't reflect that.
I hear you, Mr. Claffey. Again, I want to give a lot of credit to Mr. Donovan. We did meet with the staff over at Clearway, the leadership, to talk about more accountability, more program outcomes as we kind of move forward, as Mr. Donovan said. Attendance issues, and again, they're still Nashua students, so we want to make sure that the students are set up for success, whether in college or career. So this is a big expense. So it is one that we're, we are looking at on the outcomes. But I do agree with Ms. Brown. It's an incredible community asset, and sometimes seat time doesn't equate to overall competency or proficiency. So this is a good gateway and pathway for some of our students to be successful who are not thriving at North or South.
This kind of tailors the needs of the student, and I'm for it. I do believe in accountability. And if our students need to be in school, they need to be in school because they're not learning anything if they're skipping school. I'm going to make a motion to approve a contract with the Adult Learning Center for Clearway High School at the cost of $642,720, funding to come from the operating budget account, Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is contracts for special ed.
Yes, so there are two contracts for special ed. The first one is with a company called Here to Learn, and they provide audiology consulting and services for our deaf and hearing impaired students. They participate in the process of developing the IEPs for these students, along with the review and the interpretation of the audiological information for staff and parents. So these services, they have done some work for us in the past. We had an internal staff member who just retired, who would help out also. That person retired. So we're requiring a little more time from Here to Learn for this next school year. Thus, the reason why you probably haven't seen this contract before. So the special ed department would like to have this contract approved for up to $26,775, since it's going to be a, the way they come up with the amount is there's an hourly rate times the number of units. So this would approve it up to $26,775, and the funding for this will come from the IDEA grant.
Anybody have any questions on this one? I think it's self-explanatory. And we have our students who are hearing impaired, need additional services, and we need to make sure that they are, have the right to hear and learn in our classrooms.
Yep. And I think they're a very specific skill set to offer here, so...
Exactly. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the contract with Boothby Therapy Services for the, oh, excuse me. I'm going to make a motion to approve the contract with Here to Learn for the 2324 school year for audiology services, up to $26,775, funding to come from the IDEA grant. Second? Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any, okay, thank you. Motion carries. And the next one, I kind of started on that one.
Yes. The next one is Boothby. This has been brought forward for the last at least seven or eight years. They provide alternative augmentative communication services, which are the services used by our nonverbal students, iPads, things like that. And so they've been providing these for at least eight years, and they're familiar with our students and our student needs. So special ed would like to request that you approve the contract with Boothby Services for next year, I mean, 2324 school year for up to $36,000, funding from the IDEA grant also.
Any questions? Then I'm going to make a motion to approve the contract with Boothby Therapy Services for the 2324 school year for augmentative communication services for up to $36,000, funding to come from IDEA grant. Second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you. On this one, the next item on the agenda is the vehicle SERF purchases. I guess that's you, Mr. Smith?
Yes, good evening. So we have a number of recommended purchases. In retrospect, perhaps we'll take these one at a time. It'd be easier for you and I, for that matter. So we have a, our primary mower for our fields and spaces around the schools is, call it X-Mark mower. It's, one of them is at the end of its service life. We actually budgeted for replacement this coming, current fiscal year. And we, like many things, X-Mark is a, provided a license to a local vendor. So you, it's not like you can get multiple quotes from in-state or even index state over. So we're kind of stuck with this one company, but we've been dealing with them for a long time, so. So the first recommendation is to purchase a X-Mark mower, the cost of $15,519. Funds would be from Miscellaneous Equipment Line, 91.1.22.2620.171999.
Anybody have any questions?
No. I think I do remember we're trying to keep the type of mower we're using consistent also, so that anyone can use them anywhere.
Exactly.
Okay, so there's no other companies that can bid on this, right?
Right. Now, if we want to stick with X-Mark, then we do, for the reason just stated, for training purposes, maintenance purposes, spare parts purposes, makes good sense to stick with one mower.
So any, any other questions? Okay, so does anybody want to make a motion?
Yes, I move to approve the 2023 Laser X-Mark mower from Turf Depot of Hooks at New Hampshire in the amount of $15,519, funds from the Miscellaneous Equipment Line, 91.1.22.2620.71999.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Okay. Next one I'll talk about is the replacement of one of our international trucks. We have two large trucks that are workhorses in the wintertime, particularly for snow plowing. We also, we use them year-round, though. It's a larger truck, similar to what Public Works and the Street Department use. And in fact, we use the resources of the Street Department. Public Works has their, a certain guy that's responsible for vehicles, so he's like a guru of vehicles and knows where to go to buy them and everything. So we're accessing the Sourcewell contract, which is a nationwide, already bid-out contract. Sourcewell, I think it's from Minnesota or something, one of those states out there. But they bid out all sorts of construction equipment and vehicles and that sort of thing. So it's, my point being, it's already been bid out. So we went to them through Public Works and obtained a price for a replacement. It's called a, it's a 2023 Freightliner 108 SD Plus from Sourcewell, the amount of $234,520. And those funds were to come from the city's SURF account. And it was planned for this fiscal year to purchase.
Can I ask how many miles are on that vehicle?
Luckily, I have my grounds foreman here, so I'm going to look at them. About 43?
$43,000.
Part of the issue we're looking, part of the reason, typically, we hang on to vehicles probably too long even, but we get our money's worth out of them. And this one started to become more expensive to maintain and to obtain replacement, not replacement, but inspection. So it's definitely due. And we've had it for 15 years.
Okay, 15 years. And the city services this vehicle?
They do. Which is another advantage to doing this.
I know. So we pay the city. Yes.
Are you still holding the market for a vehicle? Is that what you're asking?
Well, no, I already leased my vehicle, and I got a great deal on that one. No, I'm sorry, I don't drive these trucks.
You'd go anywhere you wanted in the winter.
Just plow right through it, right? Okay. So, does anybody want to make a motion?
So I move to approve, hold on, I think, which line are we on? The two, the first one, sorry. I move to approve the replacement truck for the 2008, wait, that's not the actual line you need. You need the Freightliner plus Sourcewell? Yeah, all right. Move to approve the purchase of a 2023 Freightliner 108 SD Plus from Sourcewell in the amount of $234,520, funds to come from the fiscal year 24 SURF.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next one?
I'll just note with that one that, in the SURF account, they budgeted $250,000, so we're below that amount.
Well done.
The next one I'll talk about is the replacement of the F-150. We have what's called a stake body, so envision a flatbed with a fence on, around it. We've had that for a good long time. It doesn't quite meet our needs. We purchased that one in 2011. We have been able to use it for snow removal, but we'd like to go back to what we had before, which was a dump body. So we're looking to replace that vehicle with a 2022 F-350 Super Duty pickup truck from Groupon Ford of Bow, New Hampshire, in the amount of $76,797.95. If you look at, and I believe the quotes are attached, there is a municipal discount associated with this. And most of our vehicles are from Groupon, and purchased them at Pass when they had the state contract.
I was just going to ask you that. Does it have the state contract anymore?
I don't believe they still have it.
Okay, so did we put this out to bid for anybody else to see if we can get a better deal than $76,000?
We did not. We, again, we've dealt with Groupon Ford. Our fleet is 95% Fords. The ones that are not Fords are the international trucks, even the bucket trucks international, I believe. So with just a couple of exceptions, everything's Ford. You can go to other Ford dealers and get other prices, but they're all going to be pretty close to this. I think by working with Groupon in the past, they've given us a decent discount on this. So it's, short answer is no, I didn't go out and get additional quotes.
Because by policy, we're supposed to go out and have competitive bids. I don't know, I've been saying this for about three years. This is the end, this is going on four years already, and why have a policy if we don't abide by the policy? And...
I would say also, I'm sorry to interrupt, but...
That's okay.
It's extremely hard to get any company to give us a price on any vehicle. We've, our first thing we wanted to purchase this year was a replacement cargo van, because we've had some old ones, and we have a couple of new plumbers actually just joined us. We can't even get them to let us quote on them until September, October. So these, the next, the next one I'll be talking about is just as bad, if not worse, as far as getting multiple quotes.
So the vehicle we have, we haven't been able to use it for snow removal, so what do we use it for?
We have used it for snow removal.
You have?
Yes. And it's a flatbed, so if you're going to move stuff, it's good for that, whether it's trash or large pieces of equipment, whatever.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion on this?
I move to approve the purchase of a 2022 F-350 Super Duty pickup from Groupon Ford of Bow, New Hampshire, in the amount of $76,797.95, funds to come from the fiscal year 23 SURF account.
Question on this. How many miles are on the vehicle?
80? Over 80,000.
Over 80,000. So we're buying a vehicle that has over 80,000 miles on it. What's the anticipated life of this vehicle with the 80,000 miles on it?
No, we, the old vehicle that we're replacing has 80,000 miles.
Okay.
This one's brand-new. Even though it says 2022, it's a new vehicle.
That's what I wanted to know, because it's a 2022, and when 2023, and the 2024s are coming out, so it's almost two years old.
It has, if you look at the quote, it has 12, 12 miles on it at this point.
Okay.
Which is pretty typical for a new vehicle.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
The last one I have is to replace our bucket truck. So our bucket truck is beyond its, on its last legs. We've, we've had to retire. It will not pass inspection. It would be extremely expensive to try to bring it up so it could pass inspection. It's a 1998. We actually purchased it, used it from the Public Works Department. And after they decide it was time to get rid of it, so we, we got another 10 years or so with a bucket truck. So this purchase is a new one. Again, I only have one, we just can't get people to quote on this thing. We've gone to multiple vendors, and they've said no. There's, we've gone to Q's, that's where the quote came from. I will say that, you know, the price I'm asking us to approve, I would ask you to, it's a not-to-exceed number. I will continue to look for additional quotes. What we didn't do with this one is go to Sourcewell. So I want to go back to them and see if they will provide a quote as well.
Anyone having questions?
So what the motion is going to be, not to exceed the amount of 217,443?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Donovan? Where we only budgeted $215,000 is coming from SURF, from the city. Is the city going to give us the difference of $2,443, or are we going to have to find that within our budget?
Based on coming in below on the other vehicle, I would think they'd give us the $2,000.
So I can answer that. They allow us to go over by 5% and still approve the purchase. Has happened in the past where we're slightly over the budgeted amount, and they've approved it.
And just another note, Mr. Smith erred in mentioning that Groupon is no longer the state contractor for, they still are.
Are they?
They are.
Okay. Thank you for correcting that.
It was an error, just I didn't know that.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of a 2023 VersaLift VST471 from Q's of Amherst, New Hampshire, in the amount not to, hold on, wait a second. Are we, are you going to get another quote? Should we, this?
I am going to try to get another quote. So I'll have it by the next Board of Ed meeting.
So should I change this?
I wouldn't use the vendor name.
Right, okay. So I would like to scratch that and start over. Move to approve a, the purchase of a VersaLift VST471, not to exceed the amount of $217,443. Funds will come from the fiscal year 24 SURF account.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Anyone oppose? Perfect. Okay. Next on our agenda is Franklin Street Playground. Mr. Smith, I guess that's you again.
It's me again, yes. So we're looking to provide a rubberized playground at Franklin Street. There's already a playground structure in place, so we'll be placing it under and beside that structure. It's similar to the rubberized surface we currently have at Broad Street at a Panther Playground, which we replaced last year. We're going to have a similar surface eventually at McCarthy Middle School in the southernmost wing. We did escrow $25,000 in FY '22 to pay for this, and I've already talked to the chairman of the Joint Special. He's agreeable to paying the balance. So I recommend the board, this, again, is a very specialized type of work. We tried to get additional quotes and can't get any... We tried to get additional quotes and can't get anybody. Uh, you might remember last year when we did this, um, we had two quotes, and these guys were the cheapest of the two. So, I recommend the Board of Ed approve the installation of a rubberized playground surface at Franklin Street School, an amount of $40,993. Uh, contract will go to Brian &amp; Sons. Funds will come from escrow, an amount of $25,000, and from Joint Special School Building Committee Construction, $15,993. I don't know if on your memo it shows, um, $10,993. I caught that in my copy. It should be 15,993, unless Tara caught the error.
The error was caught, yes.
Okay. I did error that time.
Can I ask a question? So, yeah, I recognize this is a specialized thing. Has there been, um, a increase in the price since we just purchased this last season, just of the materials? I'm wondering if there's been like a percentage that's gone up, like so many materials have?
If it, if there was, it's very slight, because we did get a ballpark number last summer, and we decided to hold off on doing it, because we hadn't installed the structure yet, and we were doing other work in the playground, so we wanted to hold off on this.
But I, but I think what happened when we were doing, putting together the escrows last summer, was there was work, we were doing work like this being done at the Panther Preschool, and remember, we had the quote, and then that changed. That was the number we used as an estimate for the escrow. Um, so that's why it was 25 as opposed to 35.
And probably, was there a little bit of size difference between Franklin and the Panther Preschool?
Little bit, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Claffey, do you have any questions? You're so good. You just keep things rolling along here.
Um, I, or do we have any reason to be concerned about security at the playground while it's being constructed?
No, all, all the gates can be locked, and typically are locked. Um, it's beyond the school day, and we can make sure they're locked while this is being constructed as well.
But there is a fence already. It's sturdy.
Yes. Chain link fence, I think six feet tall.
Just want to keep the teenagers out of there. That's where they like to hang, you know?
We're actually, as part of that project, we are also putting in a basketball court, so that's where the teenagers can hang out.
If they're short like me, they're not going to hike over that fence. Okay, would somebody like to make a motion on this? Ms. Brown?
I move to approve the installation of a rubberized playground service at Franklin Street School in the amount of $40,993. Funds will come from the fiscal year 22 escrow, uh, for $25,000 from account 91.10, And the remainder will come from the JS SBC construction budget in the amount of $15,993.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, and the next item on our agenda is the forecast through June. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for coming. Always a pleasure to see you.
Okay, so, I, I handed the, uh, the large sheet here, full of numbers. I know how most of you really enjoy looking at this, especially social studies teachers. Okay, okay. Economics, you're all right. Okay, so, basically, where we are in the forecast, this is the second last forecast of, of the year, August. At the August meeting will be the last forecast, because all the numbers will be totally complete by then. Where we are now is most of the costs have been incurred and have been booked through June, though there are certain costs, um, where either there's an invoice that I'm aware of, that hasn't been entered into the system yet, and in the top section of the, uh, the salaries and wages, the teacher, the summer pay for the teachers has yet to be recorded. Typically, what we do is we wait for the second payment, we compare the first two payments, come up with a number, and then we'll book that as an accrual for the month of August. So, that's why I'm saying, come the end of this month, we'll be final. We'll also have closed out any purchase orders where we don't expect the item within the next couple of months, so the, the full closing will be completed. Um, so, just quickly, before I just run through it, if you look on the, on the second page and you look down in the, in the box there, my projection at this point is showing that we'll have a surplus of $1,694. Now, we did make a number of purchases based on the last, uh, Finance and Ops meeting. Those are already done and in here. Um, the items that aren't in here are the $700,000 that's suggested for deferred maintenance. From what I've heard, that should be okay at the city level, but we'll have to go through an escrow process. So, if you take that, and the chairs, by the way, they would be escrow too. We'll see about those. But let's just assume 700,000, it's $1,694, so there'll still be a little bit less than a million dollars that would, would still roll over, um, to the, to the city, unless there's some changes, some, some surprises I'm not aware of, but I wouldn't expect they'd be too much. So, just quickly to run through this, since we also use this as our, we don't go through the financial report, we'll do this instead. You can see in, uh, for the salaries and wages, one column I just would sort of highlight as we go through, you'll see 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. From the right, you'll see the, it says summer slash escrow. So, these are the costs that have yet to hit the books that we're expecting to see. So, that's $7,360,000. That's my current estimate for the four teacher payrolls. Um, and then, other than that, the only other item that will probably be coming in, there's some separation slash retirement pay that haven't, that will probably be in the first July pay that will be put in here too. So, that number's probably a touch high, but, but that's just to be on the safe side. So, basically, if you look at the second last column, you'll see percent used. So, basically, we use 98.5% of the payroll dollars this year, after making a few entries. Um, the next set of accounts, fringe benefits, those are sort of at the city level. If we underbudget, we give the money back. If we're overbudget, they find the budget, they find it somewhere else. So, not too concerned. The only line that's any concern to us is the educational assistance, and as you can see, I have 15,000 there. I checked with HR. There's a few teachers that have yet to give us their, um, or they haven't been processed by HR, so I'm not sure which is necessarily true, but they'll be coming through in the next week or so for teachers that have taken courses, and we should reimburse them. They took them last school year. They probably finished in, in June, so there's a, there's a placeholder there. Um, the next set of accounts, uh, there's 5,000 for legal services. There's one more bill I'm aware of that's going to be entered into the system. The staffing services, those are the subs. I have 80,000 there. I've been doing some work. That number's probably going to be a little bit less than that, but there's one more set of invoices to be entered into the system for those. And then, the $30,000, um, for pupil support services, there's a student that requires a nurse who used to be, uh, had an IEP, that, that student still needs the nurse, but they are no longer have an IEP, so the special ed grant cannot pay for those services, so we're going to have to pay for those. So, there's a, a number of invoices that go back months. Um, so those invoices, I have those on my desk. They'll be put in, in the next, uh, within the next week or so to be paid. Um, that'll be a, something to look at next year, where we're going to get the money to pay it, assuming that student stays in Nashua and needs those services. I have to do a little more investigation on that. So, you can see that that group as a whole, the services, is 98.72% used. Okay, the next property services, um, for electricity, heating, gas, and water, I just put in, uh, estimates for the June bill. Um, by, by next meeting, that, that will be totally trued up, but I'm assuming that if you take a look at like July for those accounts, there's hardly any money in there, because you get the bill at the end of the month, so those probably aren't all in, and that's why I sort of put those estimates in. And the copiers, uh, maintenance contracts, we pay twice a year estimates of what we think it's the number of copies we're going to use, and then at the end of the year, they true that up. Based on information I have, we're going to have to pay another 17,000. We use the copiers a whole lot more than we have the previous few years, because, part of the reason, because we're back in school full-time. Um, so, that basically, that set of accounts is, is basically, we spent 100% of it with my estimates. They'll probably be slightly less than that, so. Um, the other services, uh, once again, telephone is like the utilities. It typically has one more month. Um, we'll see. And then, items that come in that don't have purchase orders, some travel expenses. I know some people had gone to, uh, some conferences, so there could be costs associated with those. Same with mileage reimbursements. The people that get those tend to be late in submitting them, so I put a little money aside for those. Um, and sort of with the game officials too, that 2,000 there, I probably don't need that, actually, but... And then, transportation services, we took, I took a look at that this afternoon. Those numbers should be, uh, there was one invoice that didn't, didn't get into the system, and there should be one more month from, those are both related to the first student, uh, transportation. And then tuition out of district, I have about 75,000 there, um, so that'll bring that total up to about 5.873 million. Interesting thing with that, that's been around that number the last couple of years since COVID. The one cost that's gone down since COVID is the out-of-district tuition. Kind of interesting. The number of students going out of district is less, and in the, during the COVID, it sort of understood that, but this year, it, it also didn't happen. So, I guess kudos to special ed and all the people keeping the students in-house, which we'd like to do if, if at all possible. Okay, so we flip over, um, and the various supplies accounts. Um, no reason to really, th- those costs are pretty much in. There'll be some clearing out of purchase orders, so there could be, some of those accounts may go down, but nothing, I don't think much will go up. I don't expect to see any more costs there. Um, the next line there, it's other expenses and direct costs. You can see the 20,000 that I'm, is a negative. That's from the grant work that was not recorded yet in June, so I estimated it there. Um, equipment, all that should either been, have been purchased or have a purchase order, so no need to add anything more there. And then, down at the bottom, you'll see a minus 250. That's a journal entry I have to make for facility revenue and for the, uh, student sports fees. So, those monies are in other accounts. We just make an entry once a year and, and book it back to the operating budget as a credit. So, I'll be doing that over the next couple of weeks. So, um, all in all, uh, with less staff than we budget for, and with the cares money, the last few years has been relatively easy in wrapping up the budget. We've been able to take some of those funds and put them, like we did this year, towards boilers and other important items for the district. Um, we have one more year of cares, and as I've said before, next year's budget's going to be a ball. So, if you're here, I don't know if you're going to be, if you're here, it'll be fun. They probably, no, no. They might extend it for the construction piece, which is important for the two schools, MD and, um, Birch Hill. That's, we're hoping that, we're being led that that will happen, but we still don't have a, a final answer yet.
Any, Ms. Brown, do you have any questions? Okay, so now that we've done the forecast, we don't need to do the June financial, because we have it there?
Yes.
Okay, so, the last thing on our agenda is a FY23 transfer report.
Okay, so I'll just run through these quickly. There's some large numbers in here, but a lot of them are related to things that, that you're aware of, that I've spoken about. The first one is the Assistant Superintendent's Office, and they were spending down their final, they had some excess money in subscriptions and conferences and seminars, and they were using those to purchase, uh, items for the summer school, for the middle, the middle school. The next one was Brentwood, um, and they were transferring money from, uh, their equipment lines into supplies, so that they made, and they made those purchases in the month of June. Uh, the next one is Dr. Crisp, same sort of thing, year-end spend. The accounts that had leftover money, they put it into supplies and, and bought various supplies for the school. The next one, you'll see two or three of them in here. Um, this is related to, we put the budget together, and the cost for subs was always put in as an additional hours. It was a labor account, because it used to be people that we employed. Now that we have this subcontractor, ESS, it shows up as staffing services. So, I never made that change in the budget, so as, I, I made a change, I, I made a transfer of about a million bucks back, you know, early in the year, and then, as we got to the end of the year, I said, okay, we're almost done. I'll make another entry for 175. And then, with the cyber, um, break, we had five or six weeks where we couldn't get any invoices in, so you'll see this, and you'll see it a couple of others. I think there's two others in here. So, that's all it is, is it's moving it from a labor account to a contracted services line, and we'll make that change earlier in, in the budget for this year. Um, utilities, the next one. If you recall, when we were discussing this year's budget, I had budgeted electricity at about, about $1,550,000 for this school year. Um, we had typically been budgeting at about 2 million. I thought with the savings on the, the measures we did at the two high schools and the, um, the, um, solar panels, we would save that kind of money. We didn't. Um, we hope to see more savings, but to be conservative, when I budgeted for this coming school year, I put it back to 2 million again. So, this is an entry where I had to take some excess labor dollars and put it in to cover the cost of the utilities. They're basically going to run what they did the previous year. Uh, the next was, um, there, I took some excess labor to buy some, um, five, that, that was for special education. Uh, there was some contracted services they didn't have enough funds for, because they had to use outside services, and for some supplies for the, the IT department. Uh, the next one, the $100,000, that was to purchase the software that we've added. I think it's called Falcon CrowdStrike. That's what we have on our system now. That's what the, um, cyber experts told us we should add, so that we can hopefully not have to go through this, um, process again, so that was the...
Do you know if that software comes with any kind of an insurance policy, once we use it and install it?
I don't, it will go, it will go towards doing that. I don't know if simply this software is all we need. But keep in mind, that sort of, uh, insurance, we go through the city for. We don't purchase that separately. They typically do some self-insurance for a certain level and then get a policy to cover it over. They didn't have it because of the cost of it and the requirements necessary to even be allowed to get the insurance. So, I don't, I'm not an expert in if this will do it. My guess is it would be more than just this.
Thank you.
No, I was just going to add, um, as far as the cybersecurity, the mayor has set aside money in his budget, um, so that we can have more collaboration between the city school and the... and the police department so that we could have an extra shield. And we're collaborating more on building up our platform, our cybersecurity aspect of it. So Falcon's going to be one level, but we're also looking at building a stronger infrastructure. Risk management is involved in that conversation. So I think we'll be in good shape going forward and really partnering with the city and the police department to make sure that this doesn't happen again.
Okay, the next one is, just like I had mentioned before, that ESS entry where we're taking it from a labor accountant and putting it to the contracted services. The next one, moving funds to cover legal costs, which typically each year. I hate to budget a high legal thing because I always, I'm a positive person, but we tend to end up always spending more on legal than I had hoped. So that's what that is. And the next one, the $482,000, that is for the boilers and the security at MD and Birch Hill. Those were two of the items that the board approved last month. So that was the entry to cover that. The $60,000 is once again the substitute amounts. You would have thought I would have done one entry or maybe two instead of three, but I still might have to do another one for about 10 grand to get everything paid. And then the last entry, which has the page behind it, that is the rest of the items that were approved at last month's finance and ops and board. It's the cooling tower and the history books and music, et cetera, et cetera. So the details on the back, those are the items that we discussed last month. So that's the entry so that we could get everything in the right account and get everything paid.
Sure.
Is the last row for the total? Or is, there's no description of the 781, that's all?
Well, the 781 is actually, the 781, if you subtract the boilers and the security, then that will equal this entry of 278. The boilers and the, we're on another entry. The 482908. If you take the entry two before it, for 482908, add the 278, this last entry, that will equal the 781.
All right. I don't, I don't see those numbers. I'm wondering if I'm looking at something different. So this is, I'm looking at that year-end.
Year-end spend requests?
Yep.
Yes. So that's the total of the spend requests that we put through entries and purchase orders, et cetera.
So 71 is the total?
781.
Oh, that's it. Just didn't say total, so I just want to make sure it wasn't.
Yeah, okay. Sorry.
Brown, did you have a question?
Nope, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. How is that staffing service working since we approved it?
We're having a meeting next week. So we can maybe talk about it. I think there's some pluses and there's some questions. We have one more year in the contract. My opinion is a couple of things they can clean up, especially their invoicing. And then I think we sort of have to make the decision. They certainly are saving our HR department from having to recruit and sign up and get all these people in. Are they getting enough people? No. So like I said, we'll talk with them, have a discussion, see if there's ways we can get more bodies in the door next year.
I guess the question is, is it, they're not doing what they need to do or there's nobody out there? Because that's all you see is nobody out there. And I speak to people all the time. And you kind of question, a lot of people who were retired, that were working retired with COVID, but now you're seeing some of us in my age group starting to come back to work again. So, I mean, if there's nobody out there to work, how do we find them?
So I have to give some credit to ESS and their local network. Nicole's in our office frequently and I have conversations with her. She is out there actively being in the bushes. And so she's actively recruiting in different venues. She is very proactive, but it's that conversion rate. So she might have 500 people who might be interested, but only 10% actually come into work for us. So I think there is an aspect of people just signing up to be substitute teachers. It's not only a deficiency in Nashville, but other districts are struggling with the number of substitutes as well, so. But they are being proactive. They are trying, they're actively trying to recruit. So I give them credit for that. But as Mr. Donovan said, there is some value add on taking the burden off our HR department and trying to recruit and retain some of our substitutes. But our fill rate is still not where it needs to be. We're hovering around 50% to 60%.
And how was it before COVID?
I would say certain schools, it might have been around 70. And other schools, you know, around 50. So it's not as good as it was. But it was never, we never had like an 85% fill rate or anything like that. That just.
Go ahead, but use your mic before he yells at us.
I would guess that there are more absences since COVID. Vacancies to fill. At the same time, it might be harder to find people to fill those.
Yeah, I can't answer that exactly. There were during COVID, when we were in session in-house, there were more absences. Did this school year have more absences than pre-COVID? I don't know. But at this meeting, ESS does supply a lot of data, so we can take a look at that. We used to keep track of all that. So that's one of the other things that they should be hopeful with, is bringing the data, analyzing it, and sharing it with us.
That would actually be really interesting to know.
I was just going to say that. That's going to, that would be interesting to see. Okay, I'm going to make a motion to accept the FY23 transfer report. Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Is there anything else we need to speak about this evening?
That is all I have.
That's all you have? Okay, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And we are adjourned at 7:12. Thank you, everyone.